To the pledge and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the flag, I pledge allegiance to the text of one state under God, one and indivisible.
And we have Mr. Cody Faber from First Baptist Church, and he's going to bless us with a prayer tonight.
Pray with me, please. Lord, we ask that you would continue to bless our city. Lord, we ask that those who are in need would find what they need to have, God. We ask that you would be with every citizen of this community, and we ask that you would help us to be good neighbors to those around us. Lord, we pray now for our city council and mayor and other city leaders, Lord. Well, we know often the task of leadership and the burden of leadership can be heavy and lonely. And so, God, we ask that they would find support and encouragement as they listen to the needs of those in our city and work to make this a better community. And so, God, we trust in you, knowing that every good and gift comes from you, Lord. And so, we just ask that you would continue to be with us and bless us. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Cody. I appreciate your time so much. At this time, we'll have our statements of citizens. Unless I've missed anything, I think we just have one tonight. Ms. Hatchett? Thank you for coming.
Well, y'all already have seen me before, so you know my name. You know I resided 2003 Rice Avenue, Rice Drive. Anyway, I'm here to do a report. Six weeks ago, I conducted an online survey to learn what the major concerns of our community towards the Levelland Animal Shelter were. Today, I'm reporting on the third issue. The third issue addresses, issue addresses the problem of our shelter reviews not being posted or being deleted. In addition, volunteers were faced with resistance getting current status of animals. We did, we did not know whether an animal had been adopted or rescued or were no longer available for adoption. The feedback is critical to us because we do not want to spend our precious time trying to save an animal who is no longer in the system. Today, I'm pleased to report that y'all have made certain changes that address not only the third issue that I'm bringing up, but also the first two that I had previously brought up. I'm happy to report that in the last weeks, we have experienced an explosion of number of adoptions and rescues. Some as a result of efforts that our shelter employees have done by working in civil get togethers that October, November special events. And we've had great success with that, a remarkable success with that, which only confirms to us that what we were wanting is obtainable. If the efforts are put out. But now, the bad news is, we face even a greater challenge, or you do, that the challenge is to continue to take necessary steps to convert these temporary improvements and results into a long-term shelter benefits. Now that we know it can be done, we want it to continue to be done. The challenge is our community, we, the public, have is faces is to continue to support your efforts and to give you every resource that you need to achieve long-term changes. We understand that we, that will include making certain adjustments in leadership, painful adjustments, so that the shelter employees
We are out of time.
will be encouraged to change their mission and vision to match the desires and visions and missions of the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your continued work at the animal shelter. Our second item, our next item of business, the first one will be to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2024 regular meeting, November 7th, 2024 special meeting, and then November 8th, 2024 special meeting.
May I move to approve the meeting of October 21st, meeting of November 7th, and the meeting of November 8th?
We have a second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Item number two will be to consider and take necessary action to approve a special event application for the benefit for Chris Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As a part of my duties as City Secretary, I am the Chair of the Special Events Committee. And when we have a special event, in case you don't know and you're new to the system, there are three things that might be criteria or that are criteria for applying for a special event permit. They are if you anticipate 200 or more people at your event, if you are requesting a street closure, and if you desire to serve or allow alcohol at your event, that particular part of the special events ordinance requires your approval, and that's what we have here for us today. Danny Anderson is hosting an event for Chris Jones. Chris Jones is a friend of his who has faced some medical issues, and Danny wants to raise money to defray costs. And just like he did a few years back when Mr. Tucker, he had a special event fundraiser for Mr. Tucker. He has worked with TMW, the Event Center, to host an event in Mr. Jones's honor. And so, what will happen is, there will be a concert in the building, the lot across the street will be available for cooking and whatnot, but they're wanting to close the street. So, it's a Friday, it's a Saturday event, but Friday evening, starting at five, he wants to close the street so that they can have the cookers over there cooking for the brisket that they'll be selling, the barbecue they'll be selling at the event. The next day, they will have the actual event. So, this event went to the Events Committee. We asked him a slew of questions. They all came out with great answers. He has purchased event insurance that we require for any event that's held in our city, utilizing our city streets. We asked him if he had a plan for all the trash, the garbage. He had a plan. He has security lined up. He is taking care of his food permits. It is the opinion of the Events Committee that his event be approved. The portion that you need to approve is the fact that there could be, although he won't be serving alcohol, it's not out of the realm of possibility that somebody will show up with a cooler, and he wanted to cross off every item on the list, and so, he wants to get the City Council approval to host this event in the event that there is alcohol at his event. Danny is here, and he is willing to and happy to answer any questions you have about the event. Otherwise, we would request that you approve his special event coming up this weekend. No, it'll be Second Street from Avenue H to Avenue Y. And of course, if it were Avenue H, we'd have to apply for a text stop permit, but it'll just be that side street that goes between the lot and that building so that they can walk back and forth safely.
Any questions for Andrea or for Mr. Anderson on this?
I move, I move to approve the special event application for Danny Anderson's benefit for Chris Jones.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks for doing that.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on Resolution 2024 Fish 38 extending the May 29th, 2024 disaster declaration and continued activation of the Level and Emergency Management Plan.
Mayor, member of the council, this disaster declaration is a housekeeping matter that we extend our declaration to December 18th. Again, as long as we have debris and different items like this out, we need to continue this so we are eligible for potential reimbursement and funding.
Really just a housekeeping matter so that we can, if anything comes up, apply for any reimbursement.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-38 extending the May 29th, 24 disaster declaration.
Second?
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next, we will move on to item number four, to consider and take necessary action to author our staff to initiate competitive procurement for vehicles and equipment included in the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget.
Mayor, members of the council, our current budget that went into effect on October 1st, several of these items that you see on here were discussed during budget and we placed in there, and before we go forward, we purchased this, staff has had, has brought these before you for your review and approval that we can continue to move forward. Most of these items would actually come back to you, just if they're over the $50,000 threshold for your review and approval. What you're seeing here, Fire Department had four self-contained breathing apparatus, and then 26 self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders. Police Department had animal shelter upgrades of 30,000, emergency management, the panic button alarm system at 20,000, outdoor activity lighting detection at 26,000, Shop Department automobile code reader, Parks Department and mowers at 19.5, ice machine at Oxy at 6,500, utility trailer at 5,000, sand separators for water wells at 8,000, Cemetery Department irrigation upgrade at 10,000, two mowers at 39,000, and a truck at 50,000. Water Department had a truck at 65,000, Baco at 120, six-inch water pump at 85,000, wastewater department, Alamo fence repair, that was 35,000, Kubota tractor with deck is 55,000, Street Department truck 45,000, Christmas decorations 30, mosquito sprayer 15,000, asphalt cutter is five, sanitation alley, truck rear loader 400,000. That's from our Internal Financing Fund, shipping contractor 40,000, landfill fence at 50, and the inspections Department, a new pickup at $45,000. Several of these items, we'll be looking at person utilizing ARPA funds, and as we go in to the next item, and we talk about the expenditure of ARPA. If all of these are budgeted items, but if we can have the availability under ARPA funds for access, we may move some more of those over into that arena as well. But we're just asking for the authorization to initiate the competitive procurement for vehicles and equipment included in the FY 24, 25 budget.
Just get this going and help us move forward with purchasing and price checking on all of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fisher, under the wastewater, you list a Kubota tractor. Does it have to be a Kubota?
No, sir. We just, I think that's just what we had. It'll just will list what we, what we're looking for and whatever brand comes in. That's what we'll get.
Not advocating.
No, no, I understand, and I appreciate you pointing that out because it doesn't have to be a specific brand.
And the shipping contractor, is that for a new chipper? The machine, the wood chipper?
It's not a new chipper. It's just to help get rid of some of that stuff we've got. We had a big pile that
Our giant wood debris pile?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Because we've got that big pile out there, and then we got the storm debris pile that's out in the county area.
And all this is stuff that we've seen, we saw in budget. We discussed all of those.
Yes, sir.
We offer our staff to initiate, to initiate the competitive procurement for the vehicles and equipment included in the FY 24, 25 budget.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five, discussion on the utilization of ARPA funds for the purchase, capital items, studies, analysis, and other critical items that enhance the public safety, health, and welfare of the community.
Mayor, members of council, we placed this item on here because in March of 2021, the ARPA fund was signed into law, and funds were provided to the city as well as a whole bunch of other governmental entities throughout the country. City of Levelland received approximately $3.3 million. We have used portions of those funds since we received it. We have approximately $896,000 in that fund at this time. We have to either expend it or allocate it prior to December 31st. So, in preparation for the December 16th meeting and preparing a resolution that will show categories where we're going to spend the funds or actual items where we want to spend it, we wanted to come to you to see if there was anything that y'all wanted us to look at specifically to add to our list that we could possibly take care of as we continue moving forward. Some of the things, and if you're, again, we're going to look at that previous list that we authorized those expenditures, but some things that got talked about in budget or came out as a result of the storm, we're looking at how we fund those and where we can do it. Generators are one of those items, and those are a very expensive item. We're looking at the security system upgrade for this building and for other facilities. Some items that have been talked about but haven't gone anywhere, mainly due to the cost that was involved, and we've been very conscientious of public dollars. Is a comprehensive zoning ordinance. Levelland is starting to see some new stuff coming in. And if we want to require these people to do things to make them unique to Levelland, to make our community look good, we need to look at upgrading our zoning ordinance. Another item is our compensation plan is to get that in place so we understand how we're taking care of our employees and if anything should be changed, and if it does, how do we change it and how do we make that occur over a time period? We can't, I will tell you this, any compensation change, we can't afford it all in one way, but maybe if we have one, we understand where we're at, we can implement it over a certain time period. That previous list had a new ice machine at the Oxy. We had talked about there in the storm about putting in a second one or putting in a larger one at the Fire Department because we really, that's, everybody comes and uses that one. And so, we're looking at potentially putting another one there. Those are just some initial items. Didn't know if there's anything specific that you may want us to look at. The funding on this or the utilization of the remaining fundings is, there's been some reports that says you have to have it all expended by 1231, and then there's others, and I think more people are leaning this direction, that if you don't have it expended, you have to have it allocated. Say, this is what we're going to use it for. And in talking to some other cities, they said where you, some places you don't want to be specific unless you know exactly what the dollar amount is. So, maybe a category of park improvements where you could go in and you could list that we're going to fix this, 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 and this, a list of items. Because the one thing you don't want to do is say, we're going to replace a fence, and it costs 75,000, we budget that, and it only comes in at 50. We've lost that 25. So, we're going to be looking at that to try to make some sense of something.
It's not spent or not allocated, it's returned to the Fed?
The feds will ask for it back if we do not do that.
No, we're not losing our dollars.
We're using all we can.
Eight ninety-six, come in here.
Are you of the opinion that this is the best utilization of the money?
These are our initial things we're looking at. We're looking at everything out there that we've talked about and maybe didn't have the funds. We're trying to go back to see just things that got talked about staff, got talked about council, just the budget wasn't there to do it. So, we're trying to go through that to pick up some things that I think could help staff better, but help our community better as well.
Do those, the cost of those generators, do you have an idea on that cost?
We, initially, we've seen some coming in around 75, and we've seen some coming in around 250.
Do we have the power to support bigger generator there?
The 250 is the portable one is the big one. I think that we've all kind of said we need, but it's always been kind of cost prohibitive to go down that path. So, we're looking at that again to see what we can find out there.
New communication antenna and tower has kind of hit our radar a time or two. Is that something we might want to look at?
Is this the time to maybe tackle that with? These funds going to be, always be hard to find tower dollars. Is this the time to knock it out? And I know location of where to put one is maybe as big as how to pay for it, right? I like the tower idea, too. I know we come up, I've come up with locations, and then I go, someone tells me, oh, but that's in the flight plan for the airport. Those aren't things I think of.
We're also looking, we talked about communication tower broadband. Are there things that we can possibly do to help with that within the city?
Mayor, there's no action required.
No, sir. Just a discussion item. Any, anything else on item number five? Joe, you have any?
Anything?
Anything y'all want to say that you think we absolutely need to move forward with all those dollars?
Yeah, like I said, we're gathering a list, and we'll bring it back to you.
So, we'll see this again, pray multiple times, right?
Try not to ask public safety because they always have a Christmas. It's never ending.
They said no comment. That's right. I said, no comment.
Mr. Fisher, my only concern is that we spend that money. Is there a plan we get it all out the door, or we get it all committed before we?
That's, we've been working on this. Soon as we got through budget, and we looked at several things in the budget, and you look at Agenda Item 4, it says ARPA. We targeted some of that, but we were also kind of stepping back to see where we were ending up with insurance covering some things, and unfortunately, that's not going to kind of work its way out in time. So, that's, that's where we've looked at other things that we budgeted that maybe we cover it with ARPA to just give us some flexibility as we go into the year. If, if we got to expend some dollars we hadn't anticipated, that we found some savings by moving some things around.
I guess if there's extra dollars, we can always put it at the swimming pool, right?
We could. And also, you know.
It's going to happen, something.
And again, it can go towards the studies, the swimming pool study, the animal shelter services study. So, those kind of things can be moved there, too. And our interim fire chief sent me a two or three-page list of things that she was looking at, so.
Glad to know we're working on it, and we want the $1 of the 800.
We're going to make sure that none goes back.
Anything else on item number five? Okay, next item, item number six, will be considered and take necessary action on the city charter amendment process timeline and city charter amendment committee appointment. We will have our attorney at the microphone later.
Good evening. So, y'all have heard us talk about the, a potential charter amendment, and so, got through budget, working through, you know, recovering from the storm and the different things, and now it's time to look at this and see if this is what y'all want to do. And so, we've been putting some time into this, and so, I've got a little, I took a training deal that I did for attorneys, and I just kind of shortened it because we don't want to be here all night. But the city charter is really our constitution, and it sets forth the law of the land, and really, we're allowed as a home rule city to do anything that's not otherwise prohibited by law. Now, over the past 50 years, a lot of things that used to be covered in charters have been subsumed by state law. And you'll see in some of the notes that we provided to you, a lot of things that say, you know what, we're going to call an election, it's going to be on the first day after this and that. Well, state law now tells us we have uniform election dates, and so, we might as well start cleaning those things up. And this charter is, what, 80-plus years old and has been amended one time?
Do you know what year that was at?
1948, when the charter was adopted, and then 1998, the first amendment occurred.
You actually each have a charter? Yes. We are 34 years. Has not been touched in 34 years.
And, and another way of looking at that, it's been touched once in 80 years. And so, there's just stuff that needs to be cleaned up. There's stuff that we see in cities like y'all's that, that the citizens expect. We'll talk about those at the end. And so, we'll run through here. So, here are some of the crazy things we're seeing, not necessarily in yours, but I've mentioned some of these, all law enforcement families entitled to free access to movies and houses of entertainment, whatever those are. No flying of kites that would annoy persons. Those two got combined. The chief of police will be elected by the citizens, not something that was still happening. Elected council member subject, that's my favorite, elected council members, that's y'all, subject to drug testing when randomly selected. That doesn't even make sense. Randomly selected by the city manager. And so, those are And so, those are the kinds of things that we see, especially in these that go back to the 19 teens, and so, so what do we do? More and more cities are having them because it's time to, it's time to clean these up. As I said, y'all are not, it's not unusual that y'all are 30 years since your last one. Very common for us to see that. The problem is, is you have a lot of things that contradict state law, but more than that, in what we're seeing with y'all's is the 1990 amendment, we had moved to a city manager form of government, but we have provisions in there that says, this is what the council does, this is what the manager does. Sometimes they directly contradict, and sometimes they're just not within the spirit of what we have a city manager form of government in. And so, there, there will be cleaning up of those inconsistent provisions, others that we just don't follow. Like, how many of y'all can name the people that sit on your Board of Equalization? Yeah, so, I mean, we don't have it, and you know, we have stuff on taxes and appraisals and collections. That's now handled by the appraisal district, and so, again, how do we do this? So, here's, here's what I will tell y'all and to the media and the citizens that are here. This is and will be as transparent a process as can be. We will have, number one, we don't have to have a committee. But I'm telling you, I know of two in what I call West Texas in the last 40 years where they didn't use a committee, and interestingly, they both lost. Here's what's amazing. This committee will be invested in this. They will look at it. I've had them say, you know what? You may think that's a good idea, Slater. You may think that's a good idea, Mr. Fisher. If that's the way y'all want to go and the council wants to go, we'll be out there campaigning against you. Invaluable to know that information. So, we really believe in having a committee. We believe in the media being involved and invited to anything that we are doing. We will post these meetings. I'm not sure that's required, but we will darn sure post those and send out when we're going to be having those meetings. And, and we will watch social media because a lot of times, we had one in Muleshaw, it passed, but I mean, there was a right turn. Somebody interpreted it wrong. I mean, great that the citizens are reading it, not great that they completely misunderstood it. They picked up some steam, it still passed, but you know, we saw most of them were passing with about 86%, and that one passed with like 54%. We want to make sure that the people understand or don't misunderstand what, what we're trying to do. Do we need a committee? Most are using it. I think it legitimizes the process. And like I say, the two times that it wasn't, and especially one up in the Northern Panhandle that we now represent, we certainly didn't at the time. They hired consultants out of Austin. They said, you don't have to have a committee, and word got around. Somebody checked. They found out that most places did have a committee, and they just decided it was not a legitimate process, and so, they voted no on everything. The other thing is, is that committee will be invested. They're, they're your best advocates. They go to church in your community. They're in the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the whatever. They teach at the schools. They work at the county. They will be out there helping people to understand why it's important. This is in your law, you're telling you what to do. It's not y'all telling the people what to do. It is really a neat dynamic when you get to see it going on. So, those people are appointed by y'all, and I hope y'all have some ideas on, on who to include. But I, I want diversity, and I'm not just talking about racial or gender diversity. I mean, we want college educated, we want high school educated, we want, you know, people who grew up here. We want, you know, people that touch different parts of the geography of the town. We want to make sure that everybody who wants to say has a say. We were talking before tonight began, you know, are the public allowed at those meetings? Absolutely. Can they participate? Well, we don't even have to have the meetings, and so, probably not, but we will. We will have a time because we want to hear their input. We want to be able to answer the questions that they may have. So, what does the committee do? They're going to meet with the city staff and the attorneys. I'm just going to get this out. Um, so what does the committee do? They're gonna meet with the city staff and the attorneys, I'm just gonna get this out here because this is not, not always, but I've I've had cities go, that's kind of weird. I'm telling y'all, there there's some trust in this, I think for this to work best and that is those committee meetings work best when this group's not here. Because if y'all are there, it stifles. Um, y'all are gonna have communication from me, you're gonna have communication from staff, you're gonna have input with me, I'm gonna know. I I'm I'm kind of there on your behalf and if you said Slater, we're not listening to you and we're gonna show up, is there anything I could do about it? No, um, there's not and I and I wouldn't because I mean, you certainly probably have a right to be there. But I do think it works better when they can really let go and talk about these things, when they can say, you know what? I had a deal that concerned me about this, they don't have to feel stifled. But I will tell you this, any questions you have, any input you have that will be listened to, that's one of the reasons we want to make sure y'all had an actual copy of the charter. And then in your packet from tonight and and then may need some deciphering because an attorney wrote them and they're Brian's notes. Um, but kind of the, just some things we saw and I think when you match up and you look at your charter, you'll see, okay, I think I understand what they're talking about. But I would venture to guess, you tell me if you think I'm wrong, this is in some form or fashion is going to be on the agenda for a while. To to have discussions on this. And if you are looking at it and you have questions, get them to him, he'll get them to me, we will get you answers. I believe in this, y'all have heard me say this, if one of you has a question about something, I assume that you would all have a question about that something, so we will get that information out to anyone else. Uh, if the if the citizens uh or the media have questions, the same process, if they'll reach out to City Hall. Um, we will get that probably um disseminated at the next uh meeting. So getting started, um, assuming we can get a committee put together, we have a letter that will go out. Here's the problem, when you get people and you get busy schedules, it's hard to find dates, but I always will have two meetings and in and just assume that three is the number with the committee. And we'll we'll break up the agenda and go through it, sometimes you have them really involved and they want to come back a third time before they make that recommendation to y'all. They will, um, we will have updates from those meetings and I will have one or more of those people, usually several of them will want to be here for them to give you updates or to at least stand beside me so that if y'all have questions or they can at least say, yeah, these, these are the things that that were things, so it's very um interactive, we will get them a copy of the current city charter as we did y'all, um, we will post the meetings. Try to limit them to an hour and a half, um, that means I've got to be tremendously organized, but it's hard to ask for more, a a bigger time commitment than that um in the evening. Uh, we'll split those into to two or three meetings uh and invite them uh to follow up. So who is there? I went ahead and talked about that. Um, definitely, I mean, the media is always um gonna be their um staff administration, I've had, I didn't think it was the right idea, but I've had um a city manager say for the same reasons I said, probably not great. Uh, for y'all to be there, he said, I'm not coming for the same reason. That's a person who knows an awful lot about the details of the day-to-day work, um, and um, I think it will probably work better uh with him, some, I mean, we may have some department heads there on on a certain evening. So subsequent meetings, we'll be going through new, we'll be addressing questions from uh the prior meetings that have come up. You will get an update, they will be in open session. Um, we have to understand y'all's thoughts and concerns as you read this. Uh, even when, as I suspect when you're elected, you read through it, um, your your eyes start, you know, kind of glossing over things and now that everybody's been here for a while, if you go back and look at these, especially with some of Brian's notes. I think it will have a lot more context for you, you will see things um that don't make sense to you anymore or things that, you know, why aren't we doing these, there there'll be a reason, I've I've read through this, there's and I have them, I mean, I had a town, it said, you will elect the chief of police at at an election. And I said, how's that work? And I said, I don't know, we don't do it. Um, so again, if we're gonna have a set of rules that we're not following, let's get rid of those rules. Um, the uh, again, this this applies to any topic we will ever have, my job and your city manager's job is to make sure y'all are never surprised that your concerns and your thoughts and your questions are answered. So here's, here's the crazy part. You have to have an election on each change. And so um you can end up with, we never like to go over twenty-five ballot questions, give or take a little bit. Um, I've seen people push the envelope, you know, and and combine a whole bunch in there together, that's not really how this is organized now. We might have some that say, you know, every time this is referenced, you know, every time it says a man's gonna do this job, I'm not talking about y'all, every time it says a man's gonna do this job, we're gonna say a person or a a man or a woman, you know, some general cleanup or to make things the same throughout, you might see those, but um again, we're gonna be looking at y'all's powers, making sure, uh, and again, ultimately, y'all have all the power because you control the budget. Um, find those things that conflict with state law. Again, we talked about this, having somebody there um from them and I would tell y'all, again, y'all do make the final decision, y'all can say, you know what, thank you for these eighteen that you brought us, but here are a couple that we've looked at. And if y'all vote to do those, that will happen, you might say, you know what, here are a couple that just thank you and we appreciate you, but with what we know and and how things operate, they're just not a good fit. And that's fine, I'll tell you, um, back um when term limits, remember when term limits got to be a big deal, a lot of cities put those in. Guess what? Now we can't get anybody to run and so if you have good people and they can't run. So we said, we you, you really need to get rid of term limits so that, I mean, you know what, if you have a bad person, you know what else gets rid of them besides term limits? Vote them out and and I'm telling you, when I I almost got run out of town when I said we we recommended getting rid of term limits. Um, they said absolutely not. And and one of them said, if y'all push that on a ballot, we will go out and campaign, my committee said, we will go out and campaign against you. Um, had another one where um just talk about, I mean, a hundred dollar a month payment, um, which isn't crazy, um, very, very normal with a lot of towns, you know, to to council members or something. Not enough to fight about, right, but um, and they said, no, I mean, this is a public service, school board people don't get paid. Why, why should y'all get paid? I said, county commissioners get paid a lot and I said, we didn't pay you to talk, um, just pa- pass on that. Um, but we do need to listen to to tie this slide back up. We do need to listen to what comes, just like planning and zoning, I mean, if you're planning and zoning people, they meet and they study these issues and every time they bring you something, you say no and do something different, why would they continue to serve? Kind of same idea, if these, if this group has ideas, we want to listen to them. Y'all will need to be supportive of this election, which will only make sense because the only things that are gonna go to the to the voters are what y'all approve and propose. We've got to have the council, the administration, the committee members out there talking about this and what it means and um, we have to know um what our talking points are so that when people ask us a question, why are you saying this? You know, why, why would we get, you know, it says we're getting rid of the 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 tax office, does that mean we're not gonna have taxes anymore? You know, we gotta be prepared to explain what that means. Speaking of the civic groups, having public hearings, I mean, we will have a time and in laws kind of changed even since I started doing this. Public can be here and talk, period, end of story. Um, but there's nothing wrong with setting as a public hearing so that they know they're welcome to come talk about that topic. Some might, you know, I mean, we know how that works, usually no, but we want them to have that option, uh, local radio is always um, a good idea, timeline, tough to read. But um, we're here. I'm discussing with y'all the process, the timeline and the need to appoint members. Um, depending on when, I mean, if we're in a position to tonight, you know, that would be fantastic, one of the problems is we're we're short of meeting, you know, with the holidays coming up, we we lose a meeting or two, that's fine, we'll we'll do what we need to do. Um, but we're gonna have, we'll have two meetings in December. Um, y'all's January meeting, we'll certainly be discussing those with y'all. Um, we'll have some room in there, we gotta work around the new year, we gotta work around Christmas if we need to have a third meeting. But um by January twentieth, first reading of the ordinance, um, second reading, the following meeting. And then last day to call the elections Friday, February fourteenth, so you see how this starts moving fast with with the holidays. And so we are jumping on these um with multiple cities uh this week and then Saturday, May third, I believe, is the election date, so that is a very fast city charters, not probably fast enough, I saw two people check their watches and I'm sorry, but I appreciate the time, um. Um, the charter, you also have in your agenda, you know, some of these uh notes that were put together, um, I think one of the things that will probably come back to y'all is um initiative and referendums, non-binding referendums and how to constitute a city council in an emergency, I mean, if something happened and we lost, you know, a majority of people, how do we work through that and and get this thing up and going? Rest of them are gonna be deletions or or changes and and here's just little things on number thirteen, article five, section six, judge of elections. The canvas of election shall happen on the next regular meeting day of said council. Was that the next called one, is that, you know, but all of that's handled by by state law, um. Nepotism, again, that is evolved with state law. Um, timing of the budget coming in, you know, that's one thing we're really gonna look at because what we've seen is appraisal districts are really struggling as they're contracting so much of their workout, I'm not talking about y'alls, I'm not, it's not a political statement, but those are coming later and later. Hard to do a budget when you don't get those numbers until the last possible day, so those are the things that we'll be looking at to give more um flexibility, yeah, there's your board of equalization, um. You know, one of the things, you know, to pass a franchise, they have to be read in full and they have to be read three times on three different meetings, um. Not necessary, I mean, a lot of places have two, I don't understand why two are necessary, um, but we can we can look at those things and again, having somebody sit there and read a thirty-eight or forty-page single-spaced document make you want to resign. Um, and I always manage to be gone on those days because I don't want to be the one reading it. Um, so anyway, that's where we are, a lot of information for y'all to start digesting. Um, but we are off and running, um, and then ultimately it'll come back to y'all for the final decision to call the election. Questions, thoughts, comments, boss man?
When you've looked at the charter, have you seen anything that's jumped out at you that's a huge wholesale concern, because but I've looked at it, it it looks like it's more of a cleanup just because of its duration of not being looked at, it's more of a getting in line with state statutes, but also clarifying some of the things that.
Yeah, and I I mean, just little things, no, you're exactly right, but but there are these little things um that y'all have the authority to introduce and pass an ordinance to have a police department, I've never seen that, I mean, I mean, a charter will usually say, we're gonna have a police department, um, if you do have an ordinance, I can't imagine how how old it, you know, it it would be, but um the um, you know, it has a limit on fines, you know, what we'll do is we'll we'll take that out and we'll set that with state law and 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 we'll continue to move with your ordinances that have them. Where we'll have one ordinance that sets your fines and everything else refers back to it so that when the, when the law changes on the amount of fines, we don't have to go in and change twenty-five different ordinances, that it will be nice and consistent, that it will um, it will not say this is um in accordance with this specific law, it'll say this is in accordance with state law now and is here and after amended, uh, it's just cleaner, it's more professional, um.
The thing that concerns me the most in there that it cleans up is about election. Going more to, because man, if we did that wrong, it's a really big deal and that makes it very difficult for Andrea to say the exact date that we're going to have this election or begin this or announce the results.
And and you, and you just take away the guessing because, I mean, if you've got a citizen who's doing the homework they need to and they pull the charter out and they're saying, okay, I want to run, this is how I do and they show up and they've missed it.
Yeah.
Shame on us, um, and and we had this, hospital districts don't have a charter, but each hospital district has its own legislation that creates that one hospital district. And it has a lot of these types of provisions in there. At a hospital district, we didn't regularly represent. But they called me and said, the newspaper just called and said today's the last day to accept applications. How many did you have? And they said, but they're wrong Slater, our applications period started today because that's what was in there enabling legislation, but it was superseded by something else. So again, you run into problems and and part of it, you've heard us talk about this is it's not just level land, but part of the professionalization of level land, I mean, a community with this many resources and and good things going and our stuff ought to be perfect and and this is a chance uh with our citizens to get things back looking perfect like they did in nineteen ninety-one, the last time we did it. Um, don't anybody start thinking about where you were in nineteen ninety-one, there's been a lot of time passed since then. Questions, thoughts, concerns, uh, ideas on a committee?
We just bring those recommendations to Mr. Fisher? Um, and if I understand right, mayor points two?
That I think that that works and and I mean, I've had it where each appoints two and the mayor appoints three, um, you know, at at some point we just gotta find that that sweet spot number.
Do you want the committee or how many is a good number?
I I think seven or eight is is a good number.
Yeah, that would be six if we each did one and she did two.
Yeah. And if everybody's comfortable with that, I think that's a fine number, I mean, it it needs to be somebody's gonna be invested. No, no, um, i- if if we need an odd number, break a tie, I have not done my job. Um, I will tell you this, if we need an odd number to break a tie, we're not taking it to an election. So, but good question, I I'm not making light of, light of the question.
The ideally is, as Slater said, if we could get this pointed tonight, that would be great. If y'all want more time, we've got a meeting on December second where we're gonna hear the audit and have that presented. If y'all want more time to to visit with whoever, because I know some of the questions will be a time commitment. Um, and we're gonna have a meeting in December, we may not be able to get two in December, but if not, we can pick up right after the first of the new year because um our meeting in January or the sixth and the twentieth and then February is third and the seventeenth. If we're getting this for a special election, we have to do it by the fourteenth of February. So there is some kind of time crunch in there, but we've also got a lot of time mainly from Slater saying and I agree with him, there's not a lot of wholesale fundamental changes in there. Um, it's just more cleanup. I I will throw this out because this comment has been made to me and and this may not be the time to have that discussion, but our charter calls for for council members and mayor, do we look at the ideal of going to a seven-member council? And and that discussion can be had, but it's not paramount to to this whole thing, it may be something that gets discussed over a couple of years, I don't know. But that would probably be the only thing that got introduced that might require more discussion, I don't.
You got six on the committee, can you, are you, are you sure you can get a good cross-section of the community? Representation?
I think I can, if, I mean, y'all will know who you put on there, um, if y'all were to tell me, you know what? Let's get bigger and do two each and and a third and if one of you said, you know, they wanted two, I have one or somebody said, you know, I I have this one and the rest of you thought, wow, nobody thought about that lady, um, there's no magic to it, um, if y'all are more comfortable bringing that up a little bit, um, I'm perfectly happy with it. This is y'all, I mean, I will support and help y'all with whatever feels right to y'all.
I would caution of making it too large because I've had one of these where we had close to twenty and it was.
Well, I think twenty is what it could mean.
Like if you think six is fair, who are we to question that? I believe that. Hey, if we, if we move forward with this tonight, it definitely helps staff and helps.
Yes.
And gives volunteers more time to get meeting dates on their calendar.
Right, and for us to get this background information in their hands so they can read it and show up ready to.
You need those individual names tonight?
If y'all have them.
Okay.
Now, is this, this uh six persons that go be in the city council have the room to be appointed?
No.
Now, council would recommend names and then y'all would vote on those six names that y'all present tonight to serve on that committee.
Yeah, then the committee. Yeah, just the committee. Bring it back to y'all for final decision.
Okay, if you're you're recommending we stay away from the committee meetings.
I I am and and again, if you said, no, I'm gonna be here.
I'm not.
And and I would be an arm wrestling.
I didn't even want to do.
But if 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 possible. But if 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 possible, if you got. Therefore, um. You will, you will have representation in that room, but you'll have a committee that feels very free. To discuss the things that they've seen to say, you know what, I'm not happy with this one part of our city. Or you know what? I look and I get the news from down the road and I really like what they did. Or. God, did y'all see what the Emerald did in his, you know, starter election the other day?
Why?
No, I'm not talking on the microphone.
Double up any of our people because I don't think we've communicated any of that.
No, well, and you can't because we we do, we follow law on open meetings and stuff. And so, yeah, I mean, if if we've got ideas and. As we go and we realize that, you know what, we've ended up with three people from over here, we might brainstorm on on what, but. Ultimately, y'all will, y'all will pick the slate. And I suspect um it'll be a slate y'all can be proud of.
So what action do you need?
And and give our nominees?
Yeah.
And get those names?
I think so.
You want to write, who's writing them down?
Nice. I'm writing them down.
I have Jerry Ann Dubree. From my district.
Fantastic.
So I couldn't hear much. Jerry Ann Dubree. She's the HR director at Southwest College.
Yep.
I have Stephanie Casalano from my district. My my understanding is mine don't have to be from my district.
Your district is the city.
The whole city, that's right. Just making sure. And Ryan Seeland. Later, he's an attorney. Not going to look at you.
Still am I, we're good.
That's right. Y'all can be free ahead. The second one would be Mr. Freddie Ruiz.
I don't have nobody. I've got him, man, but I need to talk to this person first.
Yeah, um, y'all, y'all want to take a a short break?
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying.
Recession, could you make a phone call?
Or at least.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Been trying all day.
Bill said this is not my.
Call, call her number so they don't screen your call.
Yeah, then we'll, we can.
I've 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 been trying to call Stephen Henry all day.
He was definitely on my list as well. He, I think it would be great and I I hate to say that without asking. Yeah.
I want to give him that.
Because I don't know because you put the city and do they have to live in that city?
Yes, he lives in the city.
He does, yes.
But they do have to live in that city.
I think it'd be a good idea. I mean, again, we don't have to have this, but it wouldn't make much sense.
Throw the same out there and and he he declines.
We'll, we'll take some steps to replace them.
Mr. Ledesma, do you have somebody or are you trying to make a phone call?
Right, I'm trying to uh make a phone call, trying to play the phone.
Okay, you want to take a recess? We'll take a, how many?
Ten.
We'll take a ten-minute recess. It is six fifty-three, roughly. Their recess is six, seven oh three. Seven oh five. It's like we're supposed to.
Perfect. Um, so we took a quick break so we could just confirm a couple of the last. Um, nominations and but so I think we have one, two, three, four. Um, Max, did you uh come up with someone?
We got one, but we don't have a phone number right now.
Yeah, she talked to her.
I have her.
I spoke to her.
What's what's her name?
Liz Farrell.
Liz Farrell.
Liz Farrell. And.
Steven Henry.
Steven Henry. So um, that is the nominated slate and I'm not, I'm certainly not. Taking your job, but I guess now at this point we have a motion in a second to approve that committee.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
That committee.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Right, we have a second for Max. All, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? With that motion carries.
Okay, we will get out a uh letter tomorrow. I think we are looking at the first meeting of the ninth. Uh, I think sixteenth y'all are actually meeting. Um, so we may work around that, but. To get two in and then decide what the committee wants from there. But those letters will go out. Again, with with a copy of the charter, so if you have questions. Feel free to answer them. If you're not sure of the answer, feel free to direct them to administration. Okay?
Next item in the agenda is item number seven to consider and take necessary action to award bids for police vehicles.
Mayor and members of council, uh, the city issued requests for proposals for five police vehicles and we received four qualified bids. They were reviewed by staff and we are recommending uh the bid be awarded. Awarded to uh Premier uh Chrysler Dodge Jeep. Uh, out of La Mesa. Uh, these vehicles will be Dodge uh Durangos and Captain Lopez has done. Homework and various things. Uh, he feels confident in these vehicles will uh. Satisfy the needs of of the department and the community. Uh, I know we have Tahos, but the bids we received for the Tahos were around ninety thousand dollars and a long delivery date. The um Durangos came in at approximately sixty-two thousand. And I think the last thing we saw is. About ninety, ninety days from date of. Awarding the bid, notifying them that they they could be here. Might be a little bit, you know, could move around a little. But if we get them in now, then we could probably see them by the first quarter as opposed to the others we were looking at mid. Twenty twenty-five.
And they're twenty-eight thousand dollars cheaper than the Tahos. I mean, yeah. I want a quality product, but you can. You can buy another. Another Durango for twenty-eight thousand times two, apparently, so.
And and we've seen DPS has been using these as well, so uh.
That gives a lot of confidence.
Yes, right. And I will tell y'all, I have um recently run into an issue with the city with the Tahos and the Ford dealerships. Been kind of talking them down from the police service. I thought that was very interesting, but that's just in the past two weeks.
And the Tahos are very hard to obtain.
They are. It almost seems like that Chevy is just trying to get out of that market, which is kind of sad. But um, we appreciate everyone uh bidding. We appreciate even our local Smith Auto family. Uh, just police interceptors did not uh come in and the delivery date of those Fords was late.
Yeah. Thank you, Captain Lopez, for your work on this.
Are they going to be, are they going to be just suddenly black or are they going to be white?
They'll all be black.
But I saw, I saw one car, police car, I don't know where it came from. It was black and the doors was white. I saw it in town. I don't know where they come from. I would love it.
Was it, was it behind you with lots of?
When who's somebody?
No, we've met like that.
No, one of the vehicles that's running around town or has been. Have you seen? I've seen it a couple of times in town. Lots.
Oh, we sold option.
No, it's a, it's a.
No, this is, this is new.
Yeah, it's a Tahoe. Sort of wrong.
We had a repaint order.
Sort of wrong, panium. Lane, not a few days ago. Lots. No decal.
Do we have a motion? I'm moved to approve the bid from premier CDJR La Mesa.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? With that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item number eight, discussion on the extension of water services outside the city. Thank you. And next item number eight, discussion on the extension of water services outside the city limits of Lebanon.
Mayor and members of council, I first want to start this off. I dropped the ball and I apologize for this. This request came to me in May of this year and I started looking into it. Then we had this little incident that occurred and it just fell off my radar. And I apologize to the homeowner that was requesting this because I know they were in a critical situation. But before we went forward in this, I was going to be following the same process then as we are now. The city has had a traditional policy and I've asked Joe to chime in where we can. Traditionally, when we've extended water outside of the city limits of the city of Levelland, there's been a requirement that they request annexation as well. And I know with a lot of the the changes and laws and different things regarding annexation, I didn't know if we could still do that, so I asked Slater if he would look at that issue. I don't know if he's gotten all the way there yet or if he's still trying to run various traps on that because annexation has gotten very, very ugly in the state of Texas and I don't want to do anything to raise the ire of the legislature that they're already upset about.
Really, annexation has turned into a request, you know, but one of the things that we've seen is, you know, I mean, if we're going to do city services, I mean, your benefit and we're benefit, you know, the idea is to look at annexing them in. I think it's much cleaner. It's ultimately better for them and it's better for the people that are in your community paying taxes.
What was this individual's opinion on that?
We haven't even broached that yet because I'm wanting to make sure where where council's at on this, saying we didn't want to say you have to request and then council's like, no, we don't want that to be a piece of it. So just want to kind of get y'all's feeling on this right now. I don't think we want to have a policy that says we will not extend outside the city limits and partly where I get with that's we may have a business that wants to locate that needs city water in order to come here and they're just, you know, beyond the city limits or we have to do something creative. And then we say, well, no, we have a policy. We're not going to do that. Take all of your jobs and your investment to another community. We don't want to do that, but we've also got to be conscious of the water we have is for our community and for the growth within our community. And we all know the aquifer is dropping. We're going to have more and more people that live on the edges of the city or even a little bit further out there are going to start going, our wells aren't working as well. Can the city get water to us? And there's an expense to that. And it's, you know, Joe and I were talking about it today. You know, even though we may have a line close to them, it may not be the right size of line to to serve additional people. So then you look at, you know, who picks up the cost to upsize that line or to do other kind of things. It's a very complicated process.
We have housing additions, right, Joe, east and west of town that that we provide water to, correct, that are not in suburbs? They pay extra for it, I know.
That is correct. Yes, McQuarrel Trailer Park and that area over there, yes, they pay one and a half times the rate that city citizens pay.
And I think west and, you know, I think that was where some of that water was contaminated.
West with the plume, yes, man, but that that's actually, that line is different, yeah, because it's EPA put in that line. So they were allowed to make taps off of that. So we didn't want to bring the plume towards the city of Levelland. That's why some of our wells that are on the west side, we no longer use at this time until they get that plume cleaned up.
So really, the only one comparable would be the trailer part that you're talking about.
Yes. Yes, we do somehow. Outside in the ETJ area, we do have some businesses that do have water services.
So if if we annex it and the city stands the cost for the pipelines and all of that, if we don't annex, how does that work?
If I may, James, real quick, so I can explain some of that to the council. Again, this is all based of nineteen eighty-one policies, not ordinances or it was a resolution that was put in. Actually, three resolutions were put in back in nineteen eighty-one. City resolutions, Resolution nineteen eighty-one sixteen, nineteen eighty-one seventeen, and nineteen eighty-one twenty-two. All explain about water restricting outside city level, level in, city limits. What I did, I went in there and read it all and, you know, researched it and then I just put ten steps and I wanted to tell you all the ten steps it requires to get water outside city limits, if y'all, if I may. First of all, the need. The need has to be established for water to get outside city limits. The second thing, do we have water available? And are our businesses taking some of our water allocation? Or is, you know, are we going to, are we in need of our current allocation for the city and for the citizens of Levelland? The third thing is, will there be any additional cost of infrastructure? Do we have to put in lines for them? Do all that stuff? So that's another thing we look into. And then after the fourth, if everything passes all through those three steps and the fourth thing is the council, council will approve the resolution authorizing water service. And then at that point, it says that the customer petitions for voluntary annexation. This is going to be voluntary, not that we're we're going to annex him ourselves, but it's going to be voluntary annexation within thirty days of the council approval. And then the council then approves a service plan agreement, outlining all the available services. So if we have water available, but sewer cannot be available, we're going to outline in that service agreement, hey, we cannot provide you wastewater at this time, but we are providing you water.
They would sign off on it.
They will sign off on that, yes, man. After that, there's going to be a public hearing on annexation. And then the council takes an action on the on the first reading of the ordinance for the annexation. And then step nine is we're going to have to publish another notice of annexation within thirty days. And again, Slater, this is something we probably have to look into, but this is what we did in the past with a thirty-day waiting period after that first reading. And then after that, council approves ordinance and then it's the second and final reading on that. So that's the ten-step process that I took out of all those ordinances, kind of simplified things and and the things that we've done in the past.
Slater, what do you think about that?
I think, before you, let me just ask this one question to clarify that. Would this property have to be continuous to existing city limits? Could, it couldn't be somebody that's three or four lots down from our city limits and say, well, I want to be annexed. I'm willing. I want water service and I want to be annexed. They, we would have to pick up those other pieces beforehand. So that gets complicated as well.
That sounds complicated.
It does absolutely have to be contiguous. I believe that it's always in the city's best interest to bring people in into the city limits and I don't think it's abusive. I don't think it's, I mean, you're providing a a service and the very fact, I mean, that they are seeking your services, I mean, those are people that drive on your streets and, yeah, I mean, to me, I I think it is a fair approach and we've seen a lot of success in places. And it sets a good precedent for, you know, for businesses that are coming in that are going to be right outside there because that's where there's room, you know, to to build and to say, you know, here's how we like to do that. And and we do not, we do not see really any dissent to that. I mean, it is, especially with businesses coming in, because they want to be good neighbors. They they don't want to come in and first thing they say is, you know, we want to take the good things out of your city but not be a part of it. So I I.
I take this as kind of almost a case by case.
Correct.
You're saying, we have the water.
Yes.
Do we, how much, is it cost prohibitive?
Why, why do they need city water? I mean, the need has to be established. And then the second, is there water available for them? Do, can we allocate water to this annexation? And then, of course, the any cost of infrastructure, that's the biggest thing. Does the city have to pay to put in a water line to get to that person? That's another big thing. And then.
And how long does it take to recover that even at an extended rate with or a higher rate, which the legislature has made more difficult to justify, but it's still doable and it has to be doable.
Do it like a bid in that, in that, for that, that area, like if you had several lots.
If you had, if you had enough there. And again, the the more that you have there, if you could get, you know, a group to come, actually, until you get to some level, really can probably benefit everyone without having to to take a step like that. But there are, there are options. But again, you know, what we see, and I'm not talking about this one, but what you see and we want to go here, even somebody says, we want to develop, this is what I'm seeing in a lot of my more metroplex towns. We want to get into your water system and your wastewater system. However, we'd like to stay outside the city limits.
We want, yeah, we want the cake name too.
Right, and 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 part of that is, you know.
So if y'all would like, we can take these ten steps, craft it into a policy, work with Slater on getting something and bring it back to you in January. I'm just going to tell you, it's going to take a little bit of time and with the holidays, but we can get that and let y'all look at it. At least we have a policy.
I, I, I just think that's, that's a pretty cumbersome deal. It looks to me like that ten step looks to me like there's things that could be done.
There, there can, and I, and I will tell you all with a, with a voluntary annexation, there are steps, but they just fall into place and it is not unusual for us, I mean, in the city, but to to do their application and and just start that and it just takes care of itself. And so that part is not as bad as here. One thing that that makes a lot of sense and I'm not sure that I, if I've seen it, I have not appreciated it, is this idea that they have to show a need. That's not not just a convenience or a way for them to save money.
Well, in other areas of the state where water is plentiful, it might not need a need, but here it's, that's not the case.
Yes, and you will have, you will have citizens and people from your community, which is bigger than your city, saying, why, why aren't we taking a little better care? So it just to have a process is good and to have a good process is even better.
Why did the, why did you move the city limit to the, for the person is passing that person that need the water?
To annex them?
Could it be done?
To move, if if they annex our city limits, we'll move out to their property.
Yes.
That's what that would be.
And then, and then they they'll have all the, they have to do what we do and pay for this and pay for that for the city.
Don't have to pay property taxes and that's, you know, there's a lot of folks that want to live close to the city so they don't have to pay property taxes or follow codes and regulations, but they want all the advantages and the amenities of the city.
And that's the biggest concern, boss, that you brought that up is like building codes. Right now, you know, people outside city limits didn't have to follow our building codes. So they'd have to come back in compliance. So Joe Shad would have to go over there, chief building official would have to go over there and make sure they are in compliance with a city of Levelland codes. That's the biggest thing. So I mean, and then sometimes property taxes will not, it it won't affect us because of the fact sometimes nonprofit organizations want to annex in. I think that's our last annex. So the South Plains Church annexed in, yes, man. So that there's something to look at too. So like you mentioned before, mayor, it's a case by case scenario, so.
And the big thing is, is as Joe said, there's, there's a lot of folks that they'll build stuff just outside the city because they know, well, I can do it cheaper because I don't have to pay permits. Then they come back and say, oh, I need water from the city. And this will help try to manage some of that, but I think having a policy, so if someone goes, hey, I'm going to build out here, where do I get water? Here's the city's policy for out-of-city service and here it is right up front. You got to show us the need and you've got a petition for annexation. We can go through those ten steps and maybe consolidate some of it to make it a little bit cleaner and easier. But I think we also need to make sure, and I know this makes attorneys nervous, we've, we've got to have a clause in there that gives council ability to use their discretion as well, that if a business wants to come in that's out there that may not meet steps one through five, but the jobs and and the investment that we can be able to work with that and and bring them in into the community.
I would say that's actually with the last legislative session and what they expanded on three eighty agreements for cities to do economic development as opposed to just EDCs, we could, we can handle that. The other thing, and.
We did that with the ethanol plant.
Say the last thing that I'll say, but that may not be true, is when we can expand our city limits, it makes us able to expand further in the future because if we're contiguous, when we spread out to here, next time we can go from here to here, you know, and 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 you can keep growing and you can control that growth.
And this is just me, but I don't like to sawtooth at the edges. So you're going to have one in, one out, one in, one out, one in, one out. So I mean, if you can get everything like voluntary annexation with the, with the whole, like we were talking about continuous, that'd be perfect. But if you got sawtooth, it's, it's, it's very difficult, especially for a city limit.
But it looks pretty.
Okay.
Hey, any, any other discussion on item number eight?
If y'all think of anything else, just shoot me an email and we'll look at it, but we'll have this back for you.
We'll move on to item number nine, to consider and take necessary action on ordinance one thousand eighty-five prohibiting smoking and other use of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes in and around city buildings.
Mayor and members of council, this ordinance before you is to clean up our existing regulations, but and it does one that brings in e-cigarettes and vaping because we didn't have that addressed, but it also prohibits smoking within fifty feet of any city's own building. I don't know if you have the, we had one version that was prohibiting it in all city facilities and we didn't want to try to manage tobacco, smoking in parks and those kind of things. That's, that's way too difficult. Our main concern is to keep it away from the public buildings and from our entrances where public is coming in and out because some people have some very allergic reaction to that. So we need to make sure that we we do that. You know, you get some folks that smoke cigars that really create some issues for other people. No, it all seriously, it's just creating that zone to where people can come in and not have to worry about that is is what's important. And so we're recommending approval of this on the first reading. I don't know if you're ready to read it. You present it to council and then they can consider the.
The first reading of ordinance number one zero eight five, an ordinance amending the city of Levelland Texas Code of Ordinances entitled Smoking and Other Tobacco Use on City Property to prohibit the smoking of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes on city property, providing for enforcement, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a repealer and providing for publication on the applicable parts, whereas it is generally recognized throughout the country that the use of cigarettes, including e-cigarettes, secondhand smoke and other tobacco products constitute a hazard to a person's health. And whereas it is the intent of the city council of the city of Levelland to improve and protect the public's health by eliminating smoking on city property. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Levelland, Texas, that the code of ordinances is hereby amended by adding article seven point one two zero zero entitled Smoking and Other Tobacco Use on City Property as follows. Seven point one two oh one, Tobacco Use on City Property. It shall be unlawful for any person to smoke tobacco, chew tobacco, or dip tobacco or snuff within the confines of any city-owned and operated building or within fifty feet of the outside wall or walls of such building. It is the intent of the city council in passing this section to create a smoke-free and tobacco-free environment within all city buildings. I don't, it's just in city parks and similar outdoor facilities and that we have eliminated. So we, it looks like I didn't maybe not get the most current version. Notice of this section shall be given by posting written. This facility is tobacco-free signs at or near the main entrance of each city-owned building. Seven point one two oh two, use of any electronic smoking or vaping device is prohibited in all locations where tobacco smoking is prohibited by this article. And seven point one two oh three penalty, any person who violates this article shall upon conviction be guilty of a misdemeanor violating an ordinance governing public health and safety and upon conviction thereof shall be fined in accordance with the general penalty provision found in section one point one zero six A one of this code for each offense. Each day during which a violation occurs is a separate offense. So again, other than what's before you would not include in, be after, within all city buildings, it'd be a period and not include in city parks and similar outdoor facilities.
Correct.
Great. Did you have a question, Mr. Powell? Okay. I just remember this question came up to me after I put this out and a couple of staff looked at it about including city-owned vehicles in that process as well. I I'm not going to say fifty feet from a city vehicle because if a citizen walks up to you in your vehicle, that would be crazy, but would it be difficult to add city vehicles that you can't smoke, dip, chew?
I think that's not already part of our policy. I think that's not already part of our policy.
It may be in a policy, it's not part of our ordinance. And I don't think that'd be hard to add that in there.
That, that is actually.
Do you have any concerns with adding that in there?
That's important.
So what we would do is it shall be unlawful for any person to smoke tobacco, chew tobacco, or dip tobacco or snuff within the confines of any city-owned and operated building or vehicle. Or, or in fact, we might say within the confines of any city-owned vehicle. City-owned and operated vehicle, comma, building, or within 50 feet of the outside wall or walls of such building. That's exactly, that's exactly what you want. And I'm comfortable with passing that as amended or as proposed on the first reading, and then we will have a clean copy for the second. Does that sound good?
Yes, sir.
Yes, do we have a motion?
I know do we approve ordinance number ten eighty-five prohibiting smoking and other use of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes uh, in, uh, in the confines of a city-owned vehicle and around the city buildings on the first reading.
Motion in a second, second by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to item number 10 on our agenda here tonight. And that is considering and taking necessary action to approve ordinance number ten eighty-six of the city of Levelland suspending the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four effective date of Atmos Energy Corporation West Texas divisions requesting rate change to permit the city's time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the city served by Atmos with Texas and authorizing intervention in Atmos with Texas's requested rate change proceedings before the commission. Hiring Lloyd Gossett link attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and directing unnecessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of cities' rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring state of the ordinance to the company and legal counsel.
Mayor and members of council, as you know, we are members of the West Texas Division uh, of cities. And we, through their advice, they recommend that this um, item come before you tonight and that we approve this ordinance suspending the actions of Atmos and we are recommending approval of said ordinance.
We need to read the ordinance.
This is your night, sir.
Yep.
We're gonna change this in a charter. No, um, the uh, I will not read the caption again since the mayor did that. Whereas honor about October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four Atmos Energy Corp, West Texas Division filed with the city of level land a statement of intent to increase gas utility rates in all municipalities exercising original jurisdiction within its service area effective December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the city's consultants and attorneys recommend that the city suspend the application for further review. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of level land Texas. Section one, that the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four effective date of the rate request submitted by Atmos West Texas honor about October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four be suspended for the maximum period allowed by law to permit adequate time to review the proposed changes and to establish reasonable rates. Section three, that the city shall work with the cities served by Atmos West Texas in the review and application of whether the proposed rates are appropriate, fair, just, and reasonable. Section four, that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by Atmos West Texas.
Next ordinance ten eighty-six, do we have a motion?
I move the staff uh, adoption of ordinance ten eighty-six, depending on the effective date of Atmos West Texas proposed rate increases.
Thank you.
Second by Max, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number eleven, considering they take necessary action on a software applications policy for the city of Levelland.
Mayor and members of council, Senate Bill eighteen ninety-three prohibits the use of TikTok and other certain social media applications and services on governmental devices. The bill specifically requires cities and other political subdivisions to adopt a policy prohibiting the installation of TikTok or other covered application on any device owned or leased by the governmental entity and requiring the removal of covered applications uh, from those devices. We are um, asking for you to adopt a policy, this provision down here, I'll read here in a minute. When we bring to you our social media policy that we're working on at the same time with our personnel policy, we will add this in there. But what we're asking for uh, this evening is for the adoption of this quote, in accordance with Senate Bill eighteen ninety-three codified as chapter six twenty of the Texas government code. The city of Levelland prohibits the installation or use and requires a removal of TikTok for any successor application or any other social media application specified by the Department of Information and the Department of Public Safety on any city-owned or leased electronic device except to the extent necessary for providing law enforcement or developing or implementing information security measures with the user implementing appropriate risk mitigating measures. We are asking your adoption of that provision.
Questions on that? I move to adopt the software application policy for the city of Levelland as presented. Move a second.
Second.
Second by Max, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number twelve, to consider and take necessary action to approve staff holidays for the twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Mayor and members of council, you have presented to you the twenty twenty-five uh, city of Levelland uh, paid holidays. Um, traditionally, uh, the city has two floating holidays. Uh, we're not asking to surrender those, but we're, what we're, I'm recommending to council is next year in twenty twenty-five, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth fall on a Wednesday, Thursday is take one of those floating holidays, apply it to that Friday. No one will be around that Friday. And uh, allow the employees to, to utilize that, not surrendering to for the future, just utilizing it in that aspect next year. So in twenty twenty-five, they would only have one floating holiday because we applied one to that Friday.
Makes sense. It's a nice plan to use of the, of the Christmas calendar and hopefully the employees are enjoy the three days consecutive.
Be a nice long weekend for them. I mean, most of them will be gone anyhow.
Up counting Saturday and Sunday.
Maybe we approve the proposed staff holidays for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Move a second. Motion in a second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is item number thirteen, updated on the weather incident of May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
We have no update at this time. We're still trying to close things up. Um, still trying to uh, just get all the proper documents into FEMA and get all the proper documents in for insurance and uh, Cole is doing a superb job of trying to manage all of that and work through it and also trying to get the information. We go back to the ARPA funding, trying to find out what we can do with our tower. Do we need a new tower? What would it cost? So we're just, it's a gift that keeps giving.
Okay, next item will be item number fourteen, the city manager report staff updates, project update, staff citizen recognition items of community.
Mayor and members of council, I put on your dais uh, pretty much in the comments, I put a lot of dates because it is really busy between now and the beginning part of the year. Uh, keep Levelland beautiful advisory board met today at noon. Uh, one of the big things there is remember um, the Christmas uh, yard of the month where we do holiday decorations. So that's, that'll be a fun time for the city. Cemetery advisory board is meeting tomorrow at six P M. In the civic center. The EDC's luncheon uh, is Thursday at eleven thirty. If you can attend and if you haven't made any, let Andrea know as fast as possible. Uh, Main Street board is also meeting Thursday, the twenty-first at four fifteen. The city's uh, appreciation dinner is Thursday, the twenty-first, beginning at six P M. Thursday is gonna be a crazy day. Um, uh, Chief O'Brien, we will have uh, her swearing in and uh, celebration introduction of her and her family on Monday, the twenty-fifth at five thirty. We have Thanksgiving holidays next week. Um, Monday, December second is a special meeting for our FY twenty-three audit. Um, the week of December second, we hope to have the lighting of the city hall Christmas tree outside. Um, we were gonna try to start working on it this week. Uh, the weather's kind of throwing a curveball into that, but we know we got, have got to get that tree up as quick as we can. Thursday, December fifth is festival of lights. Um, our first listen-up Levelland is Friday, December sixth, seven thirty here at city hall. Another opportunity to introduce our chief, but also uh, hear from our community um, any concerns that we have. Uh, we're hoping to work with the paper to begin our newsletter. I'm trying to get something out. Uh, talk to both of our public safety departments and we may uh, use this newsletter to introduce Chief O'Brien, but also put in some holiday safety tips of things to be thinking about, fire safety, Christmas trees, lighting, those kind of things, but also um, be very aware of scams, uh, porch pirates, those kind of things. If you're going on vacation, let Levelland police know so they can keep an extra watch in your house. Just things like that to help our community feel safer as we go into the holiday season. Um, always encourage our citizens that if you see something in your neighborhood, if there's people walking around in your neighborhood, you know who belongs in your neighborhood. It's not that we're being selective, it's just that I've never seen this person. Call Levelland PD, let us go find out their true intentions. It's amazing the number of people when I, I make that comment, hell, I don't want to be a busybody. I want people to know that this community is engaged. If they're wanting to do something that's not above board, then they need to go find another community because um, we're gonna be watching. So we're gonna try to put together some stuff like that to encourage people to get more involved. Um, Fire Chief Appicants first review is also this Thursday, the twenty-first. We are meeting with South Plains college reps about their broadband fiber and trying to utilize that. That could be some ARPA funding involved there. Um, I don't know how we make these ARPA funding even more than it is because it seems like we have a lot of needs for it, but we're gonna do our best to use it. The notice to proceed uh, was issued last week for our landfill construction uh, cell project out there. So hopefully they can get busy on that. The airport layout funding request is going to Tech dot aviation in December. Uh, our next regular meeting is December sixteenth. And one that's not on your list, um, November twenty-fifth at Lobo Lake, we'll be doing uh, trout stockings. And then on December second, we will be um, whatever other lake is today. Yeah, Fraser. I could not think of that. December second.
Awesome. Levelland, it's the worst that.
Anything else, sir? You have any, ma'am?
Okay, at this time, we will uh, convene into executive session. Item number fifteen, in accordance with Texas governmental code five five one dot oh seven four, to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duties, discipline or dispassive of a public officer or employee, city manager, and we will do that at seven forty-four P M.
I assume that you're gonna do both the executive sessions at the same time? So we'll go ahead and read the other.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Convenient to a, we will also convene into executive session in accordance with Texas government five five one dot oh seven two to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Thank you, Andrea. Seven forty-four.
Okay. The City Council of the City of Loveland has completed its executive session on the eighteenth day of November 2024 at 8:29 p.m. o'clock. With that, we will move on to item number sixteen, consider and take necessary action to consent to the hiring of Mrs. Erica O'Brien for the police chief.
There I move that we confirm the city manager's appointment of Erica O'Brien for Loveland's new city police chief.
A second.
Multiple seconds. You'll go with that. Everybody seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we are unanimous on our decision for hiring Ms. O'Brien as our new police chief. With that, our adjutant.
The City Council of the City of Loveland has completed its executive session on the eighteenth day of November, 2024 at eight twenty-nine p.m. o'clock. With that, we will move on to item number sixteen, consider and take necessary action to consent to the hiring of Mrs. Erica O'Brien for the police chief.
Mayor, I move that we confirm the city manager's appointment of Erica O'Brien for Loveland's new city police chief.
A second.
Multiple seconds.
Everybody seconded.
Everybody seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we are unanimous on our decision for hiring Ms. O'Brien as our new police chief. With that, we are a general.